Slide 18 to the House of the United States of America. To the Republican Court of Justice. Under God, Indivisible, Veritable, and Justiciable.
All right. What kind of cool stuff we got going out? Notes and everything.
Yeah, so this is just, uh... We need to designate one of us as a signer for the sale of the property. At the closing. You can either town agent or we can name somebody here and designate them. And then this is just make a motion to accept the sale of that property.
This is all the property that we sold to Jeff Kelly.
Yep.
Okay.
So two different.
Okay. All regarding that property, yeah. Okay, perfect. Oh, Jesus, but I got the...
You got the same thing?
Well, I got the just, uh... The taxability canceled. Okay, good. All right.
If it isn't, then we'll have to proceed.
But we're already, we're already set in case we do. Okay. Introduction.
So online, we have John Malcolm, Jennifer Sullivan, and Harry Van Meter. And we have Brad Myerson and Harley Cudney.
And the rest of the board.
And the rest of the board. So since John is virtual, it's gonna have to be roll call voting.
Okay. Any addition or deletion? We're gonna have executive session.
Yep, so there's an executive session for the purpose of discussing confidential client attorney communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body. I put that at the end of the meeting. I didn't know if that should be somewhere else.
No, I think it's, it's fine. It will do it at the end and that way we don't...
Okay. And then for older unfinished business, there's an update on the sale of the West Pollet property. I thought we would just add that so we would keep track of it. And I had on the agenda for Mark Fitzgerald to come because he requested to come last time and never did. But I haven't heard anything. I just put him on thinking that maybe he would want to show it, but I...
Apparently it's not important to him.
Yeah, hasn't been able to make it.
Mark Fitzgerald from the Rutland ATV Club.
Yeah, there was a request from, I think from Shorty two weeks ago at the last meeting that Mark Fitzgerald wanted to come to talk to the board because the ATV trails have to travel on town roads. So there's generally a request to be able to continue to do that. But he was going to come last time and did not, so...
We've only designated a certain...
Certain roads.
A certain amount of roads from Shorty's up to, to get to the McCormick Property Trail.
And there's like signage, signage expectations and things like that.
For that's the only thing we've ever been requested to do and that's, that's the only one we...
Is signage, right?
What's that?
Signage.
No, that, that was the only portion of road that ATV clubs have ever requested to have permission.
I'm sure he's in charge of signage.
Oh, okay. It's very nice to see you frequently. Um, so anyway, so that is probably deleted unless he...
And he didn't even contact you after last, after the last meeting that he skipped. Okay. All good. How about the minutes?
So there are two minutes that need, two sets that need approving. So the regular minutes from the last meeting and then the special meeting minutes from the 26th, which was for the pedestrian scoping study.
Okay.
All right, I'll move that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting on May the 3rd.
I'll second that.
All in favor? John?
John's muted, but he said yes.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm gonna ask it on mute.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
All in favor? Approved. Now, special minutes were the, were from the...
So it's from the pedestrian scoping study?
Right.
So they got sent out. They were very brief, just talked about what happened, that there were no significant decisions made, but since there was a quorum, I submitted minutes.
Do we have to do those individual, right?
You could probably do them both in one, in one motion if you wanted to. But you, since we've already done one, you could do another one.
Sure, I'll just move then that we accept the minutes from the special meeting.
Okay.
Bob approved it? All in favor? John?
Yes!
He can give a sum up. Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob? Okay. Announcement.
Yes. Um, there was just this on my desk, just a notice effective the 16th of May, which is yesterday, um, from Missy Meadows Spring Water that the increase, there's going to be an increase in, due to the increased prices in labor, freight, and fuel costs, the price of a five gallon bottle of water will be increased to $9. And a three gallon bottle will be increased to $6.50. We appreciate your ongoing support in business during these difficult times and we will continue to offer our exceptional product and service. Please feel free to contact us if you have any questions. The old cost for a five gallon was $8.50, so it was a 50 cent increase.
Um, I have an announcement also, which is this.
Excellent.
Um, so the rail trail, because of the grant that we got for it, um, has been featured in this Vermont Sports Magazine. And we're on page 26 and it talks about the West Pollet Rail Trail and some nearby amenities, including, um, Max Market and the barn and the station. So they gave us a little plug in here. So they gave us a bunch of copies. If anybody wants one for anything. Yeah, there we are.
There you go.
Thank you.
They will be available here at the Town Hall.
Well, supplies last.
Yeah, get them while they're hot.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Harley?
And that was, uh, that was Jessica responding to a request for information, I believe, as well as showing up.
Yeah, someone emailed me and wanted to know information, so I just sent them some stuff about local businesses.
Nice.
The only administrator?
Did not receive a report for this meeting.
So any commissions not to Monday?
Not this meeting.
And that's gonna include a 6:30 walkthrough of West...
Yeah, on Monday next week, the planning commission and the municipal planning grant meeting are together and it's gonna be at 6:30 because we are gonna be doing a walkthrough in West Pollet.
Where, where's everybody gonna meet?
Um, rail trail parking lot.
Rail trail, okay.
Yeah, there's enough space there for us all to park.
Can you repeat that?
Um, yes, next Monday at 6:30, there will be a special meeting of the planning commission and the municipal, municipal planning grant committee.
And that will be at the rail trail?
That will be at the rail trail parking lot in West Pollet.
Thanks.
I have to send Deb the warning. I forgot to do that today, but yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Road foreman?
So I connected with Keith and there's no formal report for this meeting because things are a bit slow but ongoing. He shared with me that, which maybe our liaisons can reiterate on, but there's an issue with one of the town trucks and that the Better Backs, Better Back Roads Grant for the Herick Brook Road Project has been submitted. And the paving grant, all those numbers are being finalized and Julie and I should be getting that submitted this week as well. So that's what I have.
So I've got a little more to add to that. The, uh, the MAC has a radiator that's gone. So that's the issue with the truck. And Dale and Perry have been working on Kelly Hill Road, cutting brush and preparing to put some dishes in and, and get that ready to slate. And, uh, we've connected with Riley for top shot material. Uh, and also connected with Rupert, so they're geared up to help with us the second week of July, starting the second week of July on that project.
So what do we have to have? We have to have a bulldozer here and Riley's gonna load for us? Okay.
And Rupert, uh, they said they've got four guys if, you know, if we need, as many as we need, they'll have available to us.
Okay.
And Johnny Haynes is gonna come, uh, and there's some trees that our guys shouldn't be cutting, so he's gonna come take some of the, the ones down that the root balls are in the ditch or, you know, they're in the, obviously in the town right away that need to come down, so...
Yep. So that's good. And that's all on Kelly Hill Road to prep that for... Okay, that'll be good. Brad?
Since we're on the topic of, uh, the group report, I live on Herick Brook and the improvements that were put in last year have made a tremendous difference. I think there was more hard pack put down. And in terms of drainage and just how solid the road is, uh, we've only been living there for barely two years and it's like night and day. Even in, you know, the dregs of March, when Herick Brook used to be just like impassable, dirt road. It's now beautiful and smooth. The downside of that is, of course, it tempts people to kind of speed.
Yeah, faster.
Right, right. Uh, you know, Keith and Perry were on the job every day and they did a beautiful job not just with the, you know, raising the road bed, but also, you know, with the culverts and the drainage and everything, so...
Good, good to hear. Excellent, thank you. And everything else? Going all right?
Yeah, yeah, it is. I'm, I'm meeting with them on a fairly regular basis and looked at the project with them the other day.
Excellent.
Yeah, they're doing a great job, really.
Okay, super. Where do we line up a bulldozer for this project, Kelly Hill?
Uh, I think the best approach is to go with, uh, the one by the hour through Markowski's. Unless we can find one...
We can rent one from Markowski, okay.
And I think that's the best deal because it's by the hour, it's a real reasonable rate. And if we don't use it for a couple of weeks, we're not, you know, when you rent it by the month, you better be using it.
Right, exactly, exactly. No, I didn't, I didn't realize that we, we had an option to rent one hourly from them. It makes the most sense.
That's the plan.
Super. And Leon is loading down, down in West Pollet a little bit or a lot or...
I, I have no idea.
Do you know anything about it?
No, I've seen his excavator down there.
Been down there for a while, but...
I haven't noticed.
Just always in the past, we've, we kind of like bank favor because we can't really charge for this stuff, but, so we just kind of do a barter system. And when, and they, because they're actually making money off the product that they're getting. So we in turn have asked for, what did we decide?
Dollar, um, a yard.
In-kind service, like a dollar a yard or something. There's, basically what it is is, you know, you could take some of it, but we may need you to do a couple hours worth of work with your machine or load trucks for us or something like that.
Yeah, no, I have no idea.
Right, so that's just, I was just, I didn't know if you'd been involved in that. You, you didn't know anything about that?
No.
That deal either, because initially we had one, one company took quite a lot of, uh, material out of it and we didn't really have a plan in place, so we felt that the town should get some kind of recovery from... I mean, yes, it's, it is available, but it's, it's not like it's available to everybody. If you don't have a machine and stuff like that, you can't get in there and get it. So it needs to, whoever's doing it needs, needs to compensate the town in a very minor way, but... Anything else? Was I thinking about something? No, I guess not. Well, what were they thinking about blacktopping this year?
So this year, we're not eligible for a grant. We had gotten one last year. So we need to get a handle on exactly what's in the budget. But the plan was, and also get bids to see where they're gonna be at this year. The plan was, according to Keith, was to do the entire Button Spalls Road. And as of last year, there was going, you know, based on last year's price, there was gonna be enough money in the budget this year to do that entire road. But that's kind of up in the air right now, fuel prices, so we're not 100% sure yet whether there's gonna be enough to do the entire road. And it'd be a shame to, you know, be 500 feet short.
Piecemeal, right.
So, um, I think once we get some prices, we'll have a better handle on how much of it we can do.
Sure.
And maybe we can thin it out just a bit and do the entire thing or, you know, I don't know what the best approach will be yet until we can get a price, if they're brave enough to give a price.
Right. Yeah, I'm sure. I mean, so it's such a volatile market, it has such a, blacktop has such a huge effect on fuel, so...
I'm sure they can give a price and then come do the job within a couple of weeks. But if they're trying to price work for the fall, it might be a challenge.
Anybody's guess. All right. Assessors' report.
There is one. Would you like to hear it?
Would you please?
Okay. Um, so let's see, May 17th, inspections have been completed for the 2022 Grand List. Change of assessment notices will be mailed the day the Grand List abstract is lodged with the town clerk. The due date for lodging the Grand List abstract with the town clerk for towns with a population of less than 5,000 is June 4th. We will be requesting a 30-day extension for filing the Grand List as allowed per Title 32, Section 4342 of Vermont statutes. Attached is the extension request letter, which requires the signature of the select board chair. We are requesting this extension so that Lisa can stagger the Grand List lodging due dates and grievance dates for her four towns. The tentative date we have planned to lodge the Grand List abstract is June 13th and we are tentatively scheduling grievances on July 11th. We have discussed these dates with Julie and that schedule will not affect her timeline for mailing tax bills. Lisa will continue to work remotely from home and Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and Wednesdays and as necessary to keep current with the office work. And that was submitted by Karen. So there's just that one request to sign that extension letter.
Right. And, "Dear Mrs. Remick, The Town of Pollet would like to request an extension for lodging the 2022 Grand List. We hereby request 30-day extension as allowed per Title 32, Section 4342, Vermont statutes. Respectfully, Lisa Wright." Somebody wanna make a motion for me to sign that?
I'll make the motion.
For the second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes!
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Approved. And... Town Clerk's report.
So just an FYI, we have received 27 uniform municipal excess weight permits to date. Sometime before cold weather sets in, the front door of the Town Hall should be attended to with regard to weatherproofing. Some boards on the porch are starting to deteriorate. If there are any funds left over from the ARPA funds, Jonas, Karen, and I have had conversations in the past about procuring a large scanner or copier that could handle the survey maps and have a good evening. Respectfully submitted, Deb.
So Jessica, would you, John, kind of like to put that on your radar? To see if we can find somebody to evaluate the boards and the, the weather stripping on that front door or...
Sure.
Oh, John has a list now, right?
Yeah, I know, that will go, that's also with the window issue in Julie's office.
The facilities report?
Yes.
We'll add that to the facilities report.
Add that to the facilities report. I'll make a note of that.
I think this, um, request about the scanner copier was also one that Jonas brought up last meeting.
And they were gonna talk some more about what?
Yeah.
What it would take to do what we need to do?
Yeah, I think that they, I think they should go ahead and price it because we haven't spent much of the money yet. I mean, we have some of it that we plan to do things with, but I can't think this would be a really large expense. And it seems like it would be extremely useful to be able to scan the maps, at least for Jonas.
Wonder how, how big they need to be?
Well, if they can figure that out.
Something about three foot square?
Probably.
Some of them survey maps.
Bigger than that, which I guess is not that big.
I mean, that the Regional Planning Commission has the ability to print big posters, right? So they must have some sort of large-scale copier at least. And I'm sure that they can scan big things.
Interesting.
Would you like me?
I guess, I guess they need to, uh, we can't make any decision unless we have some kind of idea what we're looking at for money.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, would you like me to send an email to those three offices and just let them know that the board thinks they should go ahead and price it and we can go from there?
Yeah, we're, we're interested in some more conclusive, you know, concrete feedback, like pricing and stuff like that and what they, what they feel they would need.
Sounds good.
Okay, anything else? Town Treasurer's memo.
There are two warrants this week. The payroll for this period was $9,104.44. Accounts payable was $17,879. General fund money, $16,936.59. Highway, $8,866.91. Wastewater, $1,001.73. A resident has reached out to request we submit onboarding documents to the Vermont Homeowners Assistance Program so that they may apply for property tax relief. I have filled out the necessary paperwork and will submit tomorrow if you're all okay with that. The only information I'm providing is our tax ID and banking information to allow for ACH payments. See paperwork on desk, so Mike, maybe you have that. The tax scale, the tax sale scheduled for tomorrow is probably off. Kevin received information from the lien holder that a payment has been overnighted to him. If the payment is received today, there will not be a tax sale tomorrow. Reminders, the office is closed on Monday, 5:30, 2022 for Memorial Day and final wastewater payment date is 6:10, 22. Any payments not received by then will go delinquent. So the two motions are for payroll warrant number 22067 for $9,104.44 and the accounts payable warrant, Julie wrote 22065, but I think it should be 22068 because last meeting was, there was 22065. So $17,879 and that was respectfully submitted from Julie Mack.
Do I have a motion for the warrant?
Sure, I'll make that motion for, um, warrant 22067 and 22068.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? John?
Yes!
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Approved.
And then the request for the homeowners assistance.
I don't think we really need to act on this utility property.
Did she just leave that for our information, basically?
Yeah, because...
She just wanted the go-ahead to be able to share that info.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's just standard information. Our account number to put it in and our tax number. If anybody wants to look at the paperwork and see what you guys think. But I don't think we need to have any kind of motion or anything.
Is it like the wastewater, um...
I'm thinking it's...
Support?
It's similar to that.
It must be if they need our bank information.
So yeah, so that they can provide supplemental financial support, maybe?
I mean, that's convenient, that's good for us.
So do you want, okay, I'll just... So I can just make a note in the minutes that you support her?
Yeah. Sure, that's, that seems like more than enough.
John, are you okay with me saying that in the minutes?
I didn't catch the first part.
So there's the, um, Julie's asking for support from the board to provide the town's tax ID number and banking information to receive ACH payments for someone who would like to pursue the Vermont Homeowners Assistance Program.
Yes!
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, this is... We're on dock.
I think that's just, um, a little, a little insert and this is the whole of my magazine.
Is there anything from Bob Morleano?
Yes, so Bob sent along reports from March and April. Um, in March, he attended a Homeland Security Grant Program meeting and that group evaluates and decides who gets grant funding. Um, and in April, he prepared and submitted a passive grant for the Town of Pollet's Highway Department and the Volunteer Fire Department, which he told us about last time when he was here. And then there is no, uh, report this time for the health officer.
Okay. Wastewater Treatment Facility is...
There was...
She sent us something, right?
Yes. Um, so, um, Sadie's last day was Friday, the 13th. Aria Weeks started three weeks ago and has been trained to cover the daily shifts as Sadie moves back to New Hampshire. We have another local we wish to hire and are working through some final interviews. Future priorities are how to proceed with potential sludge holding upgrades. The latest meeting with John Kiernan from RCAP was to try to see if infrastructure funding can be paired with RD funds to try to get 100% grant funding for upcoming projects. There's still some sort of high wet weather flow coming into Spruce Gum. Need to camera and have, need to camera and have repaired before we end up with violations at the facility from high nutrient loading. Schedule replacement or repair of air valve near end of Force Main from Spruce Gum Pump Station with Mike McDougall or A1. Will return in July of 2022 to get the last few sections of the system along 30 Main Street, Nelson Terrace, and Egg Street. Install of new hose bib faucets and most are broken or leaking on the inside and outside of the facility and we'll do this in the spring on the inside faucets. As always, let me know if you have any questions and that's from Jill Marsano.
So he asks, what they're noticing is when there's a lot of groundwater, those are really high in the pump stations. So we're expecting that something's leaking in again. So she's gonna have to get in there and send the camera through again to see if we can find where there's excessive flow. So, and they run the cameras through, we'll see and then we'll just go from there, so... All right, I didn't talk to her and ask her when, when she thought she could do it, but I think the sooner we do it, the better we're gonna be. Especially if, if it's a groundwater issue, so we need to catch it before, before it dries up. And other than that, that's about what we got for their.
Facilities report? Just, do you or John have anything to add?
I don't.
John, you have any facilities updates?
Well, there's an early update about a leak in the library north end near the, uh, the roof pitch that, by the emergency door, um, that, uh... the roof pitch by the emergency door, um, that Jeff Kelly had fixed before, but there might be an upriver, uh, problem above that with all this heavy rain we had. So we'll have to look into that.
Okay, thank you. Are you gonna, are you gonna contact somebody to look at that, John, or?
Yeah, I'll know better what my schedule is after tomorrow.
Okay, so let us know if, if we need to do something.
Thank you.
I got ahold of two other skilled contractors, and one of them is gonna get back to me on the steps there.
The steps.
Of some more varieties of options, and whether we should just resurface what we have or replace them with some textured surfaces so that we don't have to worry, because I know a lot of the elderly people don't wanna go to the library in the winter because they're afraid they're gonna slip and fall in the front steps, so. I am trying to move on with that and waiting to hear back from one guy, but the other guy's supposed to be looking at it anytime.
Okay, excellent. So Rich has got some paperwork here from the, the sale of the property in West Pollet. So we have to sign it, sign off of this.
What do I gotta do first? So on this one, we can designate one of the select board members to sign the deed of the closing, which is June 7th. Otherwise, we can use the town agent, which is John Thrasher, but we don't know if he's gonna be available the 7th. So if we wanna designate one of the board members to do that, it may be a little easier. The closing's gonna be at, oh, Tracy Rupps' office right there, just before we get into the Village Wells. And then this one is just to accept the sale. And we can use the town agent if, if that's what we decide.
Well, would you be available, do you think, since you've handled all the rest of that? Would you mind doing that?
No, I can do it.
Is everybody okay with Rich handling the sale of that? Okay. Let's make a motion. Bob made a motion to, for Rich to, to be designated.
And I'll second it.
Okay, what, to be the designated?
Signature, I guess, is the fancy pants word.
Very good, we like fancy pants words around here.
For the, the sale of this property. And we'll fill it out right here.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Approved. And the select, the select board of the town of Pollet here, but I've raised notice to the community that an intent to sell land conveyed to the town of Pollet by tax collector D. De Kimbleyers. Pollet delinquent tax collector dated October 14, 2020, and recorded on October 19, 2020 in the Book 122 at pages 433, 434, Pollet Land Records to Jeffrey L. Kelly for sum of thirty thousand eight hundred. Mr. Kelly was the highest bidder at a sale conducted by an auction.com. The conveyance shall take place at least 30 days subsequent to the date of the publication, unless a petition signed by 5% of the legal voters of municipality object to the proposed conveyances and presented to the town clerk. This notice is being published and posted within the municipality pursuit 24 v. SA, section 1061A1, dated 28th day of April 22. So we just have to put that in the paper, right?
It's already been...
It's already been put in the paper.
So the closing can take place this, can take place the 6th of June, but is going to take place on the 7th.
Okay. Okay, so we're all good? We just gotta sign that, and you get to...
And just make a motion to accept that.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we accept that legal notice.
I'll second that.
Go approve it.
So it's to accept the legal notice of the sale of the property?
Yep.
What is the address, does it say in there what the address is? Or does that unnecessary?
Dial 3445 Route 153. Well, it doesn't say.
Okay, if it doesn't say it in that, then...
You wanna just say it?
Sure.
Oh, you got your notes.
I did, yes. Just say the lane is...
That's very sci-fi.
No, it's not, because it's, it's evens, that's on the even side of the road.
I'm not gonna put it in.
All right.
I'm just thinking in my head.
Somebody, somebody who lives at 3445...
It must be 3554 or something like that, it's, it's on the even side of the road.
Hang on to this.
Always never questioned, they can see that.
3554. So close.
Is, is that on that page?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Okay, so we got all that done. New business.
Wait, oh, sorry, hold on a sec.
Okay, sorry.
So that second motion, Bob made that?
Oh, we didn't vote on it.
We didn't go through that, the whole...
To put that in the paper.
We're getting eager.
Getting, jumping ahead, pushing.
Yeah, jumping the gun here.
Myself and Jessica.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Nope. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Approved.
Do you want this back?
No.
No, you should just keep that.
I think we just gotta file it.
Okay, I'll do that.
That way, if anybody questions it someday, it will be here in the town office.
Any other old or unfinished business?
Um, do we need to discuss anything about the, um, the sidewalks grant?
Oh.
Because tomorrow, the committee for that, for that project is meeting with Devin Neary and the, and the firm, Fox, I think was the firm?
Facet.
Yeah, I don't, did everyone get the email about what they're planning to do for the first bit? Or was that just John and I?
That was just doing, John must be...
I had emailed, after the last meeting, I had emailed Devin and Nicole and just let them know that the board had voted to proceed with the third. Like, I just copied and pasted what the motions were.
If I can find the email so I can bring you all up to speed on what they were planning, because they did do a list of, of the items that they were planning to put in the first bit, and I think it sounded like the ones we had been planning on, or the ones we thought were most important. Here we are. All right. It says, "Good afternoon, all. Attached is an estimate for part of the Alternative 3 Preferred Alternative for the Pedestrian Access Scoping Study. This includes the sidewalk on both sides of the bridge on Vermont 30, the sidewalk on Church Street, and the crosswalk with RRFBs at School Street. The total anticipated project costs would be 400K, including engineering. We tried to identify what would be most likely to both meet the most urgent needs of residents and win approval in this grant cycle. This project does not include an RRFB for the crosswalk across Vermont 133 near the church, which could be included if you prefer. This initial project leaves for future grants the sidewalk on School Street, sidewalk from Sheldon's Market to Church Street, and the two additional crosswalks with RRFBs on Vermont 30 south of Church Street." And, um, and then they say they will be happy to meet next week, and Devin has scheduled a meeting for tomorrow. So that's, and then they offer a break, they had a breakdown of what, how they got that 400K, um, which was... It was a very short document here, um, which was that the five-foot sidewalk without curb, five-foot sidewalk with granite curb, and the bridge sidewalk additional cost. So yeah, 45 feet of sidewalk without curb, 500 feet of sidewalk with curb, and then 200 feet of additional cost along the bridge. Um, that all came to 188,600. The rapid flashing beacon comes to 15,000. They added 15% for drainage, and then they added 10% for contingency, um, 22% for PE and 15% for CE, which I don't know what those are, and then 10% for project management. And all those add up to 400,000, so.
PE, I believe, is professional engineer, because you have to have a...
I respect.
I would imagine CE then is some other kind of engineering.
Consulting engineer?
Okay, thank you.
Gotcha.
So do we think that those bits are the most important ones? I mean, obviously, the crosswalk across 30 is extremely important, and we were talking about how the, the sidewalks along the bridge will slow down the traffic coming around that corner because they won't be able to veer so wide when they go around the corner. Besides that, then the additional bit they've got is the sidewalk and the crosswalk leading to the church parking lot.
It seems to me like that probably makes the most sense to, to get started.
Was this for, you know how there were two options for three? There was either the asphalt or the concrete?
I think we decided to go with the concrete.
Concrete, I don't know that that was ever indicated clearly, so I just wonder if that's just something to mention.
I'll make a note to mention that at the meeting tomorrow.
Because there, yeah, I just, I, we had just, the motion was just to pursue investigating the third option, but didn't indicate which one.
Farley?
Question, I thought the price tag was mentioned during the discussion, and that was with the concrete was the 1.7 million. So from that, I inferred it was concrete.
It was mentioned in the discussion, I'm just not, I don't think it, I'm just gonna look at my... Entirely sure, again, I can verify with them tomorrow for certain.
Yes.
Uh, do we get to, the committee that was looking at this and has been involved, are they going to be able to look at the plans somewhere between engineering design and somebody actually bending metal, as I call it? Because that difference between what we're thinking of and the PowerPoint presentation versus, okay, here's what the plans actually are, sometimes can be surprising.
So I think what you're asking is before the, before the contractors are hired and it's actually produced, to look at the more detailed plans?
Yes.
When the engineering plans are complete, before it even goes out to bid, they should be evaluated.
And scrutinized.
I don't know if it'll be the same committee or if it'll be a different one, but it will certainly involve...
Actually, it might, it probably should be the board because we're gonna be the ones picking up the funds.
Yeah.
People with local knowledge, ancient and local knowledge, I think is irreplaceable.
It probably would make sense to paint it out, in my opinion, because I think that there's a lot of people that have a lot of ideas, but until they see it painted out, they may not grasp the whole project very well. And they also, there was something said about the bridge, being able to put sidewalks on both sides of the bridge without some, some vitrean stuff too, right?
I think they had to look into a little bit more about the initial engineering of the one side of the bridge, because one, one of the sides, I think the side toward Max, they said was good, don't quote me on that if that was the correct side, and the other side, they had, had still been unable to find the initial plans for the bridge, so. But they were going to continue to work on that.
Brad?
I have a question, a crossing beacon, that's part of the...
Yeah, the RR, I forget the acronym, but it's a rapid flashing beacon. It's the kind where you walk up and you push the button, and when you push the button, a light flashes so that the cars will stop.
Okay, but only, the light only comes on when somebody...
Yeah, we definitely discussed that, everyone was like, we don't want the light flashing all the time. So yeah, it would be a button to push when someone wishes to cross Highway 30 at the bridge.
Thank you.
They, they put them up in Greenwich, or actually Middle Falls, where I believe a woman was run over down there in front of the firehouse, and they do definitely get your attention when, when someone pushes it, there's a strobe right on the, right on the crosswalk sign that's just, you know, getting the driver's attention there whenever someone's trying to cross, so it's, it's a good idea.
Certainly make me feel better the many times I cross that. I live down that way, I come over to Max, I gotta cross it.
So that sounds like that's all...
It's an 80/20, right, match?
It is an 80/20, so...
So that's something to consider.
Yeah, so at four, I think that would, we would have 80, 80,000. At 400 would be our, would be our match. And again, we can, we can do that out of the ARPA funds if we want to.
Any more old or unfinished business? Is there any new business? Is there any public comment?
I have a question about the, um, the gentleman from the Rutland ATV Club who twice failed to show up to speak. Was, was it to request a sort of reauthorization of use of town, previously permitted town roads for ATV use, or was it to discuss something else?
Do you, did he even propose it, or just...
No, they, um, there was a call put into the town clerk's office requesting, mentioning that, that gentleman wanted to show up to the meeting to speak with the board, and that was all, so.
Because I was just curious whether he was going to be asking for expansion of ATV use in town on public roads and elsewhere, which is something that I'm hesitant against, that's why I came to the meeting.
Several years in a row, he's appeared and just asked the same, for the same stretch of road, so we're assuming that it would be the same and not, not expanding.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Just executive session.
Okay, executive session. Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Chairs away, it's gonna delay you five minutes. Is the preference that we just walk out the door?
You can walk out the door, I can put the chairs away. Thank you. Somebody wanna make a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications?
I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.